Special joint meeting of the Ojai City Council Historic Preservation Commission of February 11th. Well, I'll go ahead and go through this. Members of the public wishing to address the City Council or Historic Preservation Commission on items appearing on the agenda are requested to complete a speaker card and file it with the clerk. Limit your speech to three minutes. And we're all going to observe order in decorum. Roll call.
Councilmember Blatts?
Here.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Mayor Strobel?
Present.
And at the moment, Councilmember Clapp and Mayor Protem Smith are not present. Commissioner Bisaccia? I said that wrong, sorry.
Bisaccia, here.
Commissioner Boggs?
Here.
Commissioner Dornar?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Vice Chair Walker?
Here.
And Chair McCready?
Here, thank you.
Okay, if Commissioner Walker would lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, we have a workshop, and I think I can go ahead and turn it over to you, Derek.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in early and hosting tonight. It's always productive to meet with the City Council. The Preservation Commission is continuing this year with longtime Commissioners Rose Boggs, Pat Dornar, Terry Hill, Craig Walker, and myself, Rick Bisaccia, myself. Sadly, we lost Jolene Lloyd, a tireless and fierce advocate for preservation, so I'm assuming we're going to be filling that position. And this is our new commission for the year 2014. Good.
Thank you. Now, we have a meeting topics. This is, I think I said, this is a workshop session. And we have a list for meeting topics. The first is the budget for Fundamentals of Heritage Conservation Course. Who would like to speak on that?
I could speak on this. When I was a member of the Society of Architectural Historians in Los Angeles, I had heard about this workshop every year at USC on historic preservation. And it's a three-week course, but they divide it up into different topics and many subjects that you can either take the full three weeks or take various topics. And it was always highly recommended because it was an intensive way that people interested in historic preservation could get educated on a lot of the issues and topics. And I wrote to the director about a month ago because I noticed online they hadn't yet developed their program. And I said, you know, you really should have some programs for people on Historic Preservation Commissions that may need more training in the area of landmarking and the Mills Act and various other items. She thought that was a great idea and was going to look into it and talk with her faculty. So I feel like this might be a good opportunity for members of the commission as well as people in the city, the staff, to become more familiar with these different things that guide our actions, like the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines and also Mills Act. So it was just a thought, and we brought it up at our annual meeting and our retreat, and everyone thought that would be a great idea. So we're presenting the idea to you as possibly something that could be funded either all or in part for the Commissioners.
Let me tell you the good news. All our standing commissions are entitled for travel allowance to go to conferences and to pay for their hotels and what. So that's a given.
Okay.
I think you don't need our permission.
Okay.
I think what you need is to present the budget, how many people, et cetera. But it is a given on a standing commission that they are, should consider continuing education, which they can bring back to the city.
Terrific. All right, thank you.
I have a question. Greg, can you tell us what, or do you know what the course of study is going to be like in how many days and what type of, or have they released that yet?
On the back of the schedule.
Well, I saw that, but I...
They haven't yet announced their individual classes and all the details of it. They're supposed to come out with that sometime this month. But they do have the general dates. I believe it's July 21st to August 8th. But within that time, they'll have various workshops that you could sign up for one or more.
Craig, would the Commissioners be driving back and forth from Ojai to Los Angeles?
I don't really know.
So we don't really know anything until we get some kind of schedule?
That's right, until we get a better schedule.
And then the commission will submit it with their budget when we're doing our budget reviews, correct?
Yes, that's right.
It would be nice. We go the days that they, we get to see those historic homes that are listed here.
Any other Commissioners, Councilmembers, have comments on this?
Madam Mayor, Chair McCready, forgive me. I just want to make a comment. I would love for you guys to bring it back up when we have our budget and when we know more concrete information of what it entails. I would always be supportive to send any Commissioner to trainings, especially when it has to do with their line of work. So we really appreciate the time that you volunteer. So that's my only comments.
Hi, everybody. It's no big deal, really. It just looks, it looks well. You are right-handed. I am right-handed. It's very awkward. It's sitting in front and I know you anyway. Yeah, let's see, is that one offload? This one, offload, yes. And these are going back to the guys.
We'll do anything we can to help.
I'm really afraid of pitying people. No, it's not even pity. You went through more than I did. I don't have a physical. Well, my titanium is inside.
Okay, any more comments on the Heritage Conservation Course?
I know for one I would like to go.
Sounds wonderful.
The next I have is the Historic Sites of Merit Ordinance Neighborhood Planning.
I would just start by saying that I hope that all of the Councilmembers and had an opportunity to see the wonderful presentation that Commissioner Walker put together about a year, 18 months ago now. On our preliminary list of Historic Sites of Merit, it's a terrific presentation, and Commissioner Walker's been very generous in showing it to different groups, and we want to leverage that by showing it to more groups. Having said that, it was never intended to be the end of that list. And the commission is looking at other potential sites of merit and approaching property owners of those homes and properties to see if they're interested in having them landmarked. And ultimately, our goal is to provide those properties on the Historic Sites of Merit lists with enhanced protection. And we want to work with the Council and the community to design what those protections would be.
Any questions from Commissioners or staff? Any comments on this?
Madam Mayor, how many more sites do you have identified that you just haven't worked on yet?
None at this time.
Okay.
It's just the same 37 that we brought before the Council the last time. But we always had intended that it would be somewhat fluid, but that the final decision, obviously, of which sites would go on, that would be up to the Council. By resolution, they would adopt them. And it might be that there would be some that, for one reason or another, would be taken off the list, and others that could be added as they're discovered. I mean, so that's the only thing. But it wouldn't be something that the commission would just do on its own, would do it and make a proposal before the Council and get these items put on the list. And we discovered that there's some benefits of being on the list for the homeowners, one of which is that if they were on the list, they would be able to use the State Historic Building Code in helping to preserve the building, which would be a benefit to them. They would be recognized as being a historic home, which is always beneficial to a homeowner. And hopefully, we could build a simple, maybe one or two-sentence ordinance around it that would require that these homes have some kind of review before they're demolished or before they are significantly renovated where they lose their historic quality. Not that we would micromanage repairs or other things, but just that they would get some kind of protection.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, is this to be a brainstorming session as well?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that I covered the topics that were on here.
Fine, okay.
Any other comments, questions?
Madam Mayor, the Women's Club recently, not that recently, I guess, time flies, they had to redo their foundation. And when they were going to redo it, they came into the city, and the city was going to have them do this incredible renovation of the foundation. And it was going to cost them like $80,000, $90,000. But upon research, because it's a historic building, they fill under the Historic Building Code, and they were able to rebuild the foundation in a traditional manner. So they didn't have to go in, and it cost them like $30,000. So it can really also be a huge cost savings for a structure too when it comes to that kind of thing.
What, are you talking about this building?
This Women's Club. Women's Club.
Oh, the Women's Club, oh, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, well, that building is used for a lot of things. That's great.
Yeah, they just saved an incredible amount of money. And interestingly enough, the planning department didn't know this. So when they went in, the planning department told us, and it was only through my husband scrounging and scouring through everything that he discovered that this was available. So that's something that would be important once this was established, that the planning commission was, the planning department was aware of that code, so when somebody comes in with a building like that, they do get the benefit of it.
Right, we did some research when Rob Mulane was here, and he, the law said that if they've received any kind of historic designation from the city, and we thought that just meant landmarking, but apparently, even if you have a lesser designation like Site of Merit, as long as it's received that designation, then they become eligible for using that Historic Building Code.
And they say it was one-third of what it would have cost.
Right.
It's incredible.
And it also can help because sometimes when you make certain changes, you might have to install sprinklers through the whole house or do other kinds of things that if it's got some historic designation to it, then you don't have to do those kind of things. So it helps the owner to preserve it with less expense and helps to offset some of the things that come with designation.
Which is why, so when somebody, when you start promoting this, it's really critical that be put in there to show examples of cost savings when they do a renovation with their home, so that they understand that there's a financial benefit as well.
Right, and I've been doing some research on the property values of homes that have received some kind of designation. And apparently, almost universally, the property values go up considerably for a home above what would normally be happening with a house of that nature if it has some kind of historic designation, which is, sometimes people think that's counterintuitive. They think, well, there's more limitations on it, so it would be worth less. But that isn't true, all the studies that have been done. And you only have to look at all our historic landmarks here in Ojai to see all the value that is in those homes. I mean, they're all very valuable homes.
Yes, when we were putting together the list of homes, the 37 structures in Ojai to be on that list, and we were working with Rob, we found, and he brought us up to date on what this Historic Building Code was all about. And so in our retreat that we just had, that was a concern of ours, that we need to learn more about this so that we can intelligently put that into our write-ups for consideration for those houses that would need some additional things. And it's also a valuable guideline for the property owner, especially if they're seeking Mills Act relief, because they have to come up with a plan, a 10-year plan. And so if they knew about this and could factor that in, it would be great. And so the coursework down at USC would provide some of us with that information.
Could I just maybe say one more thing? It's important to realize that the Historic Sites of Merit is different from landmarking. Landmarking is a much more significant preservation that involves a lot more. The Historic Site of Merit is just to offer some protections, but not to give it the same.
Right.
So I just wanted to make that clear, that we're not talking about all these 37. I mean, we'd like if the owners are amenable to make them landmarks, but it's not, that isn't connected with it.
We're just going to be passing this back and forth here. So what the commission is working on right now is establishing the review process for properties of merit? And then the next step is to create an ordinance?
Right, that's correct.
And at some point, we've mentioned a couple of benefits for having the designation, whether historic landmark or merit. Will we have that included in some information, preferably during the review process, something that the landowner would know about, like, I'd rather not have someone go to the planning commission and be told, planning commission, the Community Development Department and be told the cost of replacing foundations, and if it hadn't been known, if someone hadn't dug out the information, there would have been a tremendous outlay of funds. And so we need to do our own research, staff-wise, to make sure that we know what benefits there might be for any historic designation or designation of merit or...
That would increase, without giving them figures, of course, but just...
So do you have a timeline in mind for when an ordinance might come before the City Council?
We haven't talked about that, but this is an ongoing effort for us, and we have pledged at our retreat to increase our efforts this year to identify further properties for potential merit status and to develop, at least take the first steps towards developing what that ordinance might be and what its confines might be.
Any other questions, comments? Anyone from the public wish to speak? Councilmember Lara?
Madam Mayor, I just also have another request. We're talking about several things, which is the Historical Site of Merit, also the Historical Preservation Designation, and then on top of that, I hear the Mills Act. So I, just as a Councilmember, I would like to be aware of the, I guess, the difference and the benefits of each one while creating this ordinance, just to have a clear concept of what we're going to be, who we're going to be approaching, what options they have. It could probably clarify some more direction, and it also work with the planning commission. So that's my only request for the commission.
That's a great suggestion, and we should provide you with that.
Well, I was just going to say, we've already published a brochure from the city that stipulates all the factors that you're talking about, both for a landmark designation and for a Mills Act designation. And perhaps maybe some of those should circulate among the Councilmembers.
And go ahead.
Yeah, I just would like to say, sometimes the Historic Preservation Commission feels like a stepchild. For example, when that letter from Jerry Camerio Dunn appeared in the paper, you know, I emailed right away and said, we've got to attend to this. And I was told, no, it will be taken care of by the Council, which eventually, I guess it was taken care of by Greg Walker, speaking to Jerry Camerio Dunn. But was there a permit issued to move that front door? I mean, that's against Historic Preservation Laws, and I don't think there was one. And it should have been run by Historic Preservation Commission if he was going to do this, because the frontage of a house is extremely important. And it says here, approval from the Historic Preservation Commission shall be required before the following actions affecting a landmark may be undertaken. And one of them is alteration of the exterior. And that definitely was an alteration of the exterior. So how do we get plugged in? Because we would never have said yes to that, would we?
No.
Yeah.
Just from the information that I recall, the door was changed without a permit. My question would be, how important is that door? I mean, is it worth not having the property protected?
It shall be a misdemeanor. Oops, excuse me.
It shall be a misdemeanor for any person to demolish, construct, alter, relocate, or otherwise perform work except for ordinary repair and maintenance. So he's broken the law. And while we're on the subject of that house, I think that our code should be rewritten to include walls going up to obscure the front of any historic landmark. I mean, that's very important for people to be able to see the front, but that's something to be undertaken at another time. But I just want to make sure that Historic Preservation Commission is plugged in when anything is affecting a landmark. And if he did it without a permit, then he's a lawbreaker. Shall I write a letter to the Ojai Valley News?
I would like to say that I would like our lawyer involved in this ordinance, because when someone breaks the covenant of what they agreed to of the Mills Act, there should be consequences. And the law says they can lose the Mills Act, and they have to pay all the back taxes. And I would like not someone from our commission to send letters to the owners, but I would like our city lawyer to send these letters, because they have broken the law when they have done things. And at the moment, they're not the only one that has done this. But we'll bring the other one up later, because that would be a longer discussion.
And for those of you watching or in the audience, we're referring to, and I'm just guessing at the number 915 El Toro. It's in the 900 block, I think.
The El Toro House, B, Landmark Number 20, it is 715 El Toro.
715.
Close.
Close.
But also, that's interesting.
And it's interesting...
Foothill Road, the Libby Gate House, I think you were referring to.
Has it a wall on it now?
The one that just, a wall appeared.
And that also is protected by the Mills Act right now?
Yes, it is.
Madam Mayor, I thought that came before you, and you recommended that they don't be allowed to put that wall up.
Different project.
We did, we voted it. Oh, no.
Different house.
The one, the...
Different house, okay.
Different house.
That's another wall that wants to go up in front of the landmark.
The interesting thing about the El Toro House is Councilman Lobo lived there for a few years, and he was not real big on Mills Act because the city lost taxes. So that's a negative for the city.
Madam Mayor, I think that this shouldn't be, this shouldn't slide, because we have these ordinances in place for a reason. And whenever something like this occurs and we turn a blind eye to it, people continue to behave with impunity. And what is the point of having this unless we make sure that it's enforced? Because it's really hard to get something taken out once it's happened.
I would just like to point out that at the day of our retreat and our site visit to the Libby House, which went fine, but when we walked about the neighborhood, we discovered this, at another site nearby, that there was a wall going up. I called the City Hall and reported this, and they said they were going to send out an enforcement inspector, but nevertheless, the wall went up and is finished, in spite of the fact that I had called.
Well, and two weeks later, then I came to the city and reported, and they said, oh, we'll send someone out.
But there's nothing in our ordinance that forbids a wall. I mean, that's the kicker there.
There may be something in our ordinance that forbids a wall, it's the question of whether or not it forbids this wall, because it wouldn't necessarily forbid it on a historically, you know, significant historic structure in front of it. I don't know. I mean, I don't know if our ordinance says that.
Well, you can't...
But a three-foot wall, which is generally allowed, would probably be permitted through from the planning department.
Well, there was a three-foot wall. That was the original wall, and they added three feet. So now, six foot, I mean. And it goes all the way across the property. It looks like a fortress. So now, they are safe from the Ojai enemies.
How, Mr. Clark, how can that wall go up without any kind of permits?
They just do it.
Well, I don't know the specifics of this case, so we'd have to find out what the specifics are and research it.
I would like the Chair of the Commission to provide Mr. Clark with all of the specifics on that wall and any other walls that you believe have gone up.
That's the way it was.
And then I would request the code enforcement to go out there and do whatever code enforcement needs to do. We certainly have had our share of walls, and we've stopped people from, we've stopped people from walls and made them move walls and...
Take down walls?
Take down walls, and I would suggest that that be done if any of these walls have been put up without permits.
This is particularly the Libby Gate House. This is last year's picture, and this is last week's picture.
Can I just say that, you know, one of the things we've talked about is the possibility of having historic zones, and that one of those might be the Arbolata, because it was designed with a specific look. And part of that were these low walls, these low three-foot rock walls along, say, Foothill, and then the smaller walls, just the rocks along the drives. And so each time somebody puts in a six-foot or an eight-foot or whatever wall, it just changes the character of that neighborhood.
But if that isn't...
And it just doesn't seem to be in keeping with the whole historic nature of the neighborhood, much less blocking off visual access to these properties.
Well, the Libby Gate House is a landmark, does have the Mills Act, so they should have the consequence.
Mr. Fletcher, if I could ask you a question. When it comes to landmark and landmark status and Mills Act properties, does it extend to walls and gates and things like that?
I don't know. Actually, I was trying to, going through our code as we were speaking here to determine what exactly is the parameters of the preservation. And I recall a conversation at a prior meeting, we were discussing, I think it was the issue of the door in this house, was the question of whether the property was landmarked or the building was landmarked, or some element of the building was landmarked. So I think we have to go back and look at the exact action that the City Council and the commission took in terms of what the designation was. Then I'd have to read the code and determine what the particular issue is. I was going to say, I will be at the next commission meeting next Thursday. I'm going to be presenting my local government legal issues orientation, and I will make sure that, you know, by next Thursday, we'll be able to discuss some of the extensive, particularly about the ordinance enforcement of Mills Act contracts and things like that. I'll make sure I add that to our curriculum.
The one thing that we do know is that the door was moved without a permit, right? And that is completely against the law. I don't... I don't think there's anything in the code, and believe me, I've read it, about walls. I think that there should be something in the code about walls. I mean, what's the purpose of having a landmark if nobody can see it?
I would like to add that one of our big concerns about the latest violation is the fact that it never came before our Commission for review, it never received a building permit. It just went up. And that's, that, to me, is, there's no, there's no reason to have an agency like an Ojai Historic Preservation Commission if we're not protecting these buildings. Otherwise, it's pure folly.
Madam Mayor, if I may add a couple comments. And just for clarification, it just seems like we're a little confused of where we stand and what the ordinance says, and I hear Commissioner Donner saying that she's read the code, it doesn't specify that there, we have any right to look at walls. So, first, I just want to make sure that we don't get ahead of ourselves and we're creating something that's not even in the ordinance. So, I just would like clarification, especially from our staff, to provide the Commission on that item. And also, it's alarming to me that, that if you guys are calling the Planning Department and they're telling you they're gonna send the Code Enforcement, to me, it presumes that there is something in the code. So, there, it's just alarming that there's miscommunication from the front end, and now it's being brought up right now at the meeting. So, if there's desire to look at the ordinance and include something with the wall, I would go through the right process to start that conversation and include our community to do so, but I just wanted the Commission to be provided with the right direction. So, I really hope that our staff could do that.
All right. And just a moment, I'll go to Commissioner Donner and Mayor Pro Tim Smith. But I wanted to comment, you know, we cannot just lob all of this together.
That's right.
There is no blanket statement. We first have to determine what was landmarked on each individual property. And take the El Toro House. The exterior of the structure was landmarked, but not the complete grounds. Is that correct?
That is correct, in that case.
But, we're talking, this is great. So, Commissioner Donner, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, they're two different situations. The --
Gate House.
The Gate House amended an existing structure that I am pretty certain was part of a landmark. As far as the El Toro Road House, they were completely wrong in moving that door, because that was part of the exterior. Now, to put up a wall that is not attached to anything, I think we need an amendment to the code to say you can't do that to block out your house.
If I could say too, on the --
Let me go to Mayor Pro Tim Smith.
As you said, there's a lot of issues, there's a lot of issues here, but the fact is, if they added another three feet to a wall and it was made of masonry, a stone, they would need a permit. And I'm under the impression they did not even get a permit from the city for this wall. So, besides the historic with walls, they did not even get a permit. As far as I know, we're gonna look into this. So, on all grounds, this is really abusive on the part of the owner. And I certainly would like, when Mr. Fletcher comes back to the HPC, to talk about what legal repercussions we have as far as if we remove them from the Mills Act, that they don't benefit from the tax break after they have broken the Mills Act.
Madam Mayor? Do mine real quickly, 'cause I'll forget. As far as, it says no alteration.
Oh, wait.
To me, altering is building a wall.
Commissioner, Commissioner Walker was next.
Well, one of the features of the Secretary of the Interior Standards, which is what we're all supposed to be following, is that there should not be an addition made to the house that can't be removed, and the wall was actually attached to the house. So, it, this was House B, so it became an addition, and that was not brought for any kind of review. And when asked whether or not that wall could be removed in the future, we were told, "No, it couldn't be removed," because it was anchored so securely into the building. So, even under that provision of this being an addition to the house, it wasn't reviewed by us or anything, it just went in.
Can I speak?
Mayor, I mean, Councilmember Claps next.
I was just saying that, to me, you're altering the appearance of the house when you build the wall. So, it says in the code right there, "No alteration." So, to me, adding a wall that obscures the property is an alteration that's, within the code, you could interpret as to mean it's not allowed. We could refine it and have it be more specific in addressing walls, but I don't think it is not being addressed with a statement of no alteration, and the walls should be taken down.
I wanted to clarify that the door and the wall attached to the house is the same property on El Toro, and the wall of the Libby Gate House is, it's actually Polymer Drive there. So, we're talking about two different places with wall problems. And I also wanted to mention that the owners of the Libby Gate House, we have a lovely plaque that the city wanted to place on their property, and there's, they said they didn't know where to put it, and so I agreed to meet with them. For two years, they have refused to meet with me to put the wall plaque up, and they have just used the property for a weekend thing, which is fine, I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. But it's interesting that they just refused to put the plaque up to meet with me. I've called them and called them, and they're always gonna call back and make a date, and nothing happens.
You know, I should have, I should have done this at the beginning of the meeting, but let's take just a moment. Mr. Clark, would you introduce our new Community Development Director?
Yes. Well, it's my pleasure to introduce Kathleen Wald. She just started with us two weeks ago, and already she looks like a couple of our council members with her leg all bound up in a cast.
Yeah.
But Kathy has very extensive experience working in a number of different communities in all aspects of planning and building, and so I think we're very fortunate to have someone with her depth of knowledge and skills join us. So, we're looking forward to getting her fully charged up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor.
One day when you have some time, I'm sure two of the Historic Preservation Commissioners would love to take you around to show you how properties we're dealing with.
Madam Mayor, perhaps Mr. Clark can refresh our memories, because the issue of the door on the El Toro House came before the City Council, and they made all kinds of arguments how the door was, was as significant historically as the old door, and it seems like we asked them if they could put the old door back up. And my recollection is, we referred it back to the Historic Preservation Commission to get your input over what should we do with this door. Am I, am I wrong in that?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. And it never went back to them?
Thursday.
Oh, this Thursday it's coming to you?
Oh, okay.
Well, there you go. Okay.
Yeah.
I do want to say here that compliance of, within our group of protected historic properties is part of our, the char, what we're charged to do on the Commission. We're not just wandering around causing trouble. We have, we have a Compliance Subcommittee. We do this.
Well, I just wanted to make sure it got back before you, because that was my recollection. That's why I'm, you know, when you said nothing's happened, yeah, so.
And I'd --
So, I guess Thursday you'll, you'll hear about it.
I'd like a clarification. As we've been talking, I thought I heard you say that they moved the door. Did they actually move the location of the door, or did they change the door?
Changed.
They removed the door that was there and replaced it with another door, correct?
And they moved the old door to a new location.
Yeah. They used the original front door someplace else.
In another building.
Oh.
Okay.
They cut it down, so.
They cut it down.
Okay. But they didn't, they didn't alter the exterior of the building by moving a location of the door. They only, so they --
Repurposed.
Replaced the door and then used the door that was on there when it received its landmark designation, cut it down and used it on another building on the site.
Sounds worse and worse.
I just want to make sure we're clear on what we're --
Do you know if the owner is gonna be at the Historic Preservation Commission's meeting to make the same type of presentation they made to us?
I saw an email indicating that they'd been asked to attend. I'm not sure any more than that, though.
Okay.
They must have altered the building in some way to accommodate the new door, I would say.
And Mr. Clark, who should the, who should a Planning Commissioner contact if they see a violation?
So, Heather Wallstein is the liaison to the Commission right now, but she's only part-time. So, these, any, any type of complaint can be taken directly to the Community Development counter and reported to Sherry. And we have a process. Basically, we log in our complaints on any Code Enforcement, whether it's HPC or any other, and then we investigate it, and then we take whatever the appropriate action is. So, it's all documented, there's a paper trail and everything.
Yeah, we started about a few years ago.
And I would ask that while we're going through this transition and we're, we're trying to get a better handle on compliance and alterations that shouldn't be in walls, et cetera, I would ask Kathy, or Kathleen, to make sure that when a Commissioner comes to the counter or calls or communicates, that someone from Community Development get back to them right away. Any other questions, comments?
I have one. And it's just going to kind of color the Thursday night meeting a little bit. One of the, and it's too bad that the Council wasn't aware totally of our discussion when we voted on the issue of denying the El Toro House the status. That was a split vote, and it was a four to three vote, and it was very close, and the people in the audience were there, the owners of the house, they were there, and I think they took encouragement from the fact that it was so close of a decision. And there were other reasons why the vote was so close. There were a number of factors where the owners of the house were not, were not fulfilling their job as being champions of the House. They missed a lot of our meetings. And the historian was, he was promised to come back to appear before us, he didn't show. There were a number of these type of situations that caused a lot of distress on the part of the Commission, and the, some of the Commissioners were thinking, "They really aren't this interested." And then they were expressing, the owners were expressing, "Well, we're gonna take back our landmark status, and if you don't do this for us." So, there was a lot of, there was a lot of verbiage that went on. Nevertheless, there were a number of the Commissioners that felt this house is too important of a structure. It's a George Washington Smith architectural wonder. It was the best of the three George Washington Smith spec houses in the Arbolata, and it deserved recognition as for Mills Act. So, there was that type of scenario that went on at our meeting, and it'll have to be decided again, I guess.
It was not for a landmark, that was for Mills Act.
That was for Mills Act. It already had, see, they had already received landmark status, and they were deciding, they were, they were considering taking back and giving up their landmark status if they didn't get the Mills Act. And to me, that was a little bit of a blackmail type of situation.
Well, and I understand the property's gonna be sold.
They're trying to sell it.
Okay. So, on the El Toro property, I want to make sure I understand where we are. They have landmark status for the exterior of the structure. Did we approve the Mills Act?
No.
Agreements?
That's what we just said, we voted it down, a close split vote.
It was four, three vote.
All right. And as a landmark status, it's coming back to the Historic Preservation Commission? No?
Seeking Mills Act.
Mills Act. Okay.
I mean, are we going to declare him a, what is it? Has he committed a misdemeanor for amending the outside of the house? I mean, he has, according to this.
Okay. What I'm trying to convey to Kathleen and to Mr. Clark is that we have some issues here, and we need to be prepared to address those issues. Perhaps we need to expand what comes back before the Historic Preservation Commission. In addition to the Mills Act, do we also need to reconsider the landmark status? Commissioners?
I would say that we, we really appreciate what he has done with the buildings surrounding his house, and that isn't considered for landmark status. I mean, he really is a talented architect.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, if I may interrupt, I apologize for doing this. I think this level of detailed conversation about the property is not appropriate for this meeting, because this is a workshop. It's gonna be an agendized item at your, at the HPC meeting. I don't want to create a situation where the property owners feel that this was predetermined at a, at a meeting they weren't present at. So, I'd recommend, I think the message is a lot clearer to me, I will be fully briefed on the property by next Thursday. I'm sure I'll work with staff and, to make sure we're ready to answer all those questions. But I'd recommend you keep this more at a policy perspective rather than project. I apologize for doing that, but I don't want to have you walk into a Brown Act problem with this meeting.
Thank you. And I have, we haven't mentioned the, well, the neighborhood planning aspect of the historic preservation. Is that something that the Commission has in order? Have you designated historic neighborhoods? Do we have any?
The only one we've discussed is the Terramina.
The report on the historical significance in the structures in Terramina was written by a committee of residents who go way back in the neighborhood, in the neighborhood. In fact, one or two of them have applied for this Commission, so they're pretty good historians. It is right now sitting in Judy and Mitch's office for the last three weeks. So, all I can say is, when the comments come, I have nothing to do with this, and I will not be able to vote on this, of course, but when it comes back from Judy and Mitch's office, then I'm not sure what the next step is, but steps are being taken towards having potentially our first historic neighborhood.
Right.
But that's, so I know, you haven't heard anything in a long time, but steps, steps are being taken.
So, the neighborhood, potential neighborhood historic designations, that would be possibly? Terramina, the Arbolata? Mm-hmm. It seemed like there were at least three.
Well, there, when you talk about the Arbolata, you're talking about two areas. You're talking about the Arbolata and Foothill Park. They were distinct sections. East of, on the east side of Foothill Road, that's Foothill Park. On the west side, that's the beginning of the Arbolata. So, that, Foothill Road separates the two.
Okay. So, that was probably the third.
And, and the interesting thing about the east side, the Foothill Park, that's where you have all the Green and Green Houses, you know, the significant, the Robertson House and so on, the significant houses, that's where they were placed.
Ms. Drew.
And I think one of the things on the historic zones is that our neighborhoods, it's probably better for us to try to publicize what the options are there and let the neighbors kind of get together, because it does require a 51% vote of the property owners. kind of get together, because it does require a 51% vote of the property owners, so we want to make sure that it's a grassroots kind of a thing that comes from the neighborhood.
And that, that is one of the things that we learned from our visit to the Historic Resources Commission in Los Angeles, is that usually historic overlay zones are, getting that designation is really generated from the grassroots of the people who live in those zones. And that's how we expect, our expectation was that that's how it would come to us.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Clapp?
Which is why it's so important to educate people on the benefits. One of the things I'd like to say is, we're always talking about preserving our small-town character, and to me, the Historic Preservation Commission is the watchdog of that, and we have policies in place to help preserve our town, so it's really critical that we be much more vigilant at the planning desk to make sure that these kinds of things don't slip through anymore. And that we should review some of this stuff and see if there's ways to broaden the protections, because it's really, everyone talks about it, right? It's gotta, we have to, we have to act on it, and this is one of the most important commissions to help make sure that, that we've had the eyes out there making sure that these things aren't, aren't being destroyed in our community.
I'd like to comment that the Ojai Playhouse is celebrating their 100th anniversary, and so at our next meeting, we're going to discuss making the Ojai Playhouse a landmark.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I think it's been conveyed that we need to tighten up our observations, enforcement, et cetera, and so I think that's probably one of the more important things that you wanted to convey to the Council and staff. Correct?
Yes, thank you.
Anything else we need to discuss?
I wanted to mention one personnel that I, item that I forgot to, and that is that Brian Akins, our museum liaison, is going to continue this year, and he is a worthy successor to the position that David Mason held for so many years, and we're thankful to have him.
Any further business? Meeting adjourned.